Forest Products Industry. I acknowledge the Gumbangia people, the traditional custodians of the land in which we are meeting today. I pay respects to elders past, present and emerging and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and the ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and waters of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respects to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people joining us today. Today we'll be hearing from a number of stakeholders, including industry representatives, conservation and local Aboriginal groups. And I thank everyone for making the time to give evidence to this important inquiry. Before we commence, I would like to make some brief comments about the procedures for today's hearing. Today's hearing is being broadcast live via the Parliament's website and a transcript of today's hearing will be placed on the committee's website when it becomes available. Consistent with our current COVID protocol, the hearing room is physically closed to members of the public. In accordance with the broadcasting guidelines, media representatives are reminded that they must take responsibility for what they publish out about the committee proceedings. While parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses giving evidence today, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of the evidence at the hearing. I therefore urge witnesses to be careful about comments you may make to the media or to others after you complete your evidence. Committee hearings are not intended to provide a forum for people to make adverse reflections about others under protection of parliamentary privilege. In that regard, it is important that witnesses focus on the issues raised by the inquiry, terms of reference, and avoid naming individuals unnecessarily. All witnesses have a right to procedural fairness according to the procedural fairness resolution adopted by the House in 2018. And if witnesses are unable to answer a question today and want more time to respond, they can take a question on notice. And written answers to questions taken on notice are to be provided within 21 days. If witnesses wish to hand up documents, they should do so through the committee staff. And in terms of the audibility of the hearing today, I remind both committee members and witnesses to speak directly into the microphone. And finally, could everyone please turn their mobile phones to silent for the duration of the hearing? I now welcome our first witnesses from Table and Timbers and Pentark Forestry. Could each witness, starting from my left, please state their name, position, title and swear either an oath or affirmation?
Keith Davidson, Pentark Forestry, General Manager of Domestic Operations. I solemnly swear solemnly sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Mr. Dad?
Stephen Dad from the Pentark Group, I'm Executive Director there. And I will take an affirmation if I may. I solemnly sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Mr. McPherson?
John McPherson, Table and Timbers. I'll take the oath. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be truth, be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you. Mr. McPherson?
Yeah, I'm Craig McPherson, Representative Manager of Table and Timbers. I swear that the evidence now about the, about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you. We might just start with an opening statement from each group and then we'll go to free flowing questions. So you'll get questions from all around the table. So I'll start with either you, Mr. Davidson or Mr. Dad?
I'll speak chair if I may.
Yep.
Thank you to the committee for the opportunity to again present. You've already heard from me before about the Pentark views on the state of forestry in New South Wales generally. So I'll restrict my comments today specifically to North Coast issues, if I may. Where Pentark, for the record, has four operational facilities on the North Coast and we take in about two thirds of the high quality sawlogs that are cut from the state forest in this part of the country. Let me also introduce please Keith Davidson, who runs our forestry contracts and supply chain operations and is a local and has expert knowledge in local regional forestry issues if you have questions specific to that area of interest. Look, currently we are sitting in the beating heart of Australia's high quality, value added decorative hardwood industry. Everything that is harvested around here ends up in products like decking, like flooring, like furniture grade timber, like joinery timber and decorative beams. And surrounding us is a contiguous permanent state forest estate which is managed for mixed uses and it's regulated more tightly than any other regrowth forest in the world. To be clear, in this part of Australia, there is no old growth logging. There's no rainforest logging. We have very tight prescriptions around habitat and landscape retentions. And of the state forest estate up here, more than forty percent of that estate is under permanent protection categories. And of the rest, less than one percent is subject to harvesting activities each year. There has been an independent Ernst &amp; Young report into the impact of, economic impact of this North Coast forest industry on the economy of New South Wales. And what it shows is that this industry contributes more than $1 billion to the New South Wales economy and employs more than nineteen hundred direct and indirect workers. This doesn't include, of course, the downstream impact of what we do. The feeding of products into the, you know, the housing market and supply chain and logistics industries. Yet despite the importance of this industry to our economy and the tight regulations under which it is operated, we see that there are enormous threats to its ongoing viability. Mostly this is driven by philosophical and political motivations and there are strong objections to forestry. You see some evidence of that today with project activity outside. For example, the prospect of a great koala park in northern New South Wales has potential to be very damaging. Firstly, it will destroy an industry that is of vital importance to our local economy. Secondly, it'll place immediate and quite significant negative impacts on tropical import based operations under jurisdictions like the Congo and Southeast Asia and South America, which are far less well scrutinised from environmental perspective. And finally, the creation of a great koala park will offer no appreciable improvements to biodiversity or in fact koalas. We know this for sure now because there is good science that has emerged in recent years, which looks at the impact of forestry on koala numbers. I refer to the DPI sponsored work developed by Brad Law, which uses acoustic monitoring for the first time to accurately measure koala numbers in our forests. And what that shows is that forestry has no impact on koala numbers. And there's some good studies that you can look at which confirm that. Although, you know, the rhetoric that we hear a lot about is that, you know, forestry has a damaging impact on koala numbers. And I think the lessons learnt from the past show that even with significant increases in national parks, we're not seeing we're not seeing a corresponding improvement in koala numbers because we're really focusing on the wrong things. In this part of Australia, we have had dramatic population growth, which has contributed to increased roads, dog attacks, vehicle damage to koalas. And these are the real impacts. Urban expansion rather than forestry is having the most effect on koala numbers in this part of the country. Look, finally, we hear a lot in this industry about the impact and the potential for conversion to plantation forestry. I think that's a pretty naive position to take that we can replace regrowth native forestry with plantations in any reasonable timeframe. For a number of reasons. Firstly, it is a forty to fifty year time gap between when plantations are planted and when they're ready for harvesting for the value added products we produce. Secondly, land availability is a real issue up here. You've got incredibly expensive land. And the reality is that even though our industry is pushing for a one billion tree national plantation estate programme, we've seen zero increase in the plantation estate in this part of the country, just purely because of the availability of suitable land. And finally, I think if you ask the local communities, do they want more forest surrounding them after the devastating bushfires that they've experienced over the last few years, the answer would be a resounding no in terms of having more forest on their back doorstep. So look, in summary, I think, you know, we support an ongoing regrowth native forest industry. We think it's very sustainable. We don't think it has impacts on biodiversity values of our forests. And I think it's a critical industry to support the downstream industries that hang off it. Thank you.
Thank you. John O'Craig?
I've got a bit of a statement. My name, I'm John McPherson. I'm part owner in Table and Timbers and help manage the forest side of the business. I've also got a, my own company that I started years ago, which does private and state forests. So I've got a bit of an interest in both forestry in private native forest as well as in state forest. My ancestors have been in the industry. They come to the Clarence Valley in the nineteen, in the eighteen sixties. So about a hundred and fifty years. My great grandfather had a sawmill at Glen Ray. My grandfather was a bullockie. My father started our current sawmill a few years ago. It's a sawmill and logging operation as well as timber haulage. It's mainly a family business with a number of employees. Nephews and cousins work in the sawmill and in the office, as well as family work, partners working in the office on the harvesting site. There's probably usually about twenty five people in the Table and Timbers side of the business and the logging, Dusty's logging side. And my business has up to eight people employed in the two halves increase. All of the Table and Timbers forest farming operations on private native forest, singles tree selection and medium and light to medium single tree selection. So there's zero clear felling done in private native forestry. It's just not allowed in the rules. So anyone who says that old growth has been clear felled is purely simply lying and I've got a, it's just propaganda. Our sawmill supplies mainly structural grade timber, crossarms for power poles. Our logging operations supply a numerous number of pole yards with power poles. So timber power poles, crossarms, sawmill cuts, structural decking, bridge decking, girders, a number of essential products that you just can't get out of plantation timber. It just grows too fast and doesn't, doesn't present the quality that timber presents when it grows up through the native forest. What else was there? So we've got a, we've had a second sawmill which is currently not, not being utilised due to the, due to a lack of supply and skilled employees, which is a major problem in Australia at the moment. We've got barely enough supply to keep the current mill going and our orders. We struggle to keep up to the orders due to the lack of supply. There's plenty of resource there, but just a lack of supply. The lack of supply comes from many factors. Private native, private native forests, some private native forest owners don't want to harvest farm their property, some do. Access to roading, roading networks of local roads and that can be an issue. Council's just not keeping them up and shutting them to some of the transport. Property owners unwilling to, unwilling to log their place due to propaganda that they've got from people with an environmental and stigma from environmental on selective logging is bad, coming from propaganda from environmental groups and people, and people in the, such as the EPA with a political agenda to close the industry down. I believe there's, there's plenty of resource and no need to, plenty of resource out there. I think that's about two million hectares of state forest. There's only, well, was, there was about two percent of the state forest a few, couple of years ago being logged. And that was only eight hundred and, eight hundred odd thousand hectares of state forest that was being logged. I think that's been reduced at the moment due to the fires and wet weather and other other issues. There's a lot of old growth and rainforest in that marked up as restrictions in that estate for state forest and in, in private native forestry. Luckily in private native forestry, if we've, there's a lot of area that's initially it's called candidate old growth. When they do the review on that candidate old growth, it gets transferred over into the, into harvestable area due to the fact that it's just not old growth. And in the forestry, on the logging operations in the forestry, countless times we come across areas that we've got to use a GPS to, to work out where the old growth starts because there's just no change in the forest. It's just marked up as candidate old growth and the greens have pushed an agenda so you couldn't review that old growth. So there's stumps in them, tracks. We quite often get approval to use tracks that go through the candidate old growth, which were previous logging tracks. They've got to be approved by the EPA and the higher up in the forestry to be able to use them. But and like we've got seven million hectares of national parks, but we're finding that koalas are preferring the harvested, younger, regrowth logged state forest and private native forest and around towns and stuff. So a lot of our costs have gone up recently due to bushfires, COVID floods and lately the high inflation in fuel, which has been very little assistance from state government to the smaller private native forest sawmills. There's been some grants given to some of the larger forestry companies, mainly down south and export companies. And very little given to the smaller native forest companies, which really need a hand in these, with these, all these problems that we've been facing lately. So we realise that the wet weather has, like, you can't change the wet weather. As lately, there's been a lot of wet weather. But these, these wet, wet, wet seasons have been around for years. Like, I remember my father when I was growing up, not being able to work for months and going on holiday and then moving into a, the brick, a brick plant for a while because you just couldn't get to work in the forest. And now restrictions on wet weather back then weren't nowhere near as hard as the restrictions that we've got on our harvesting operations now. A lot of the restrictions on the harvesting operations, some of them, the EPA has been doing, has been maliciously prosecuting state forest and private property just for small things that have no impact or they haven't done wrong, asking for show clause letters all the time just because they've got a, some of the people in EPA have a political agenda and want to close the industry down will make it that, that difficult and that costly that we can't operate. So hopefully we can, this inquiry may shed some light on that. As well as the fires, fires have had a huge impact on the fact that the EPA and other stakeholders have been restricting the harvesting and salvaging of timber from the burnt fires, burnt forest, forcing state forest and private property owners to harvest the, harvest the forest that haven't burnt in, and doing clear felling, the clear felling, only clear felling that has been happening has been on the plantation estate, which has been heavily, heavily logged in the last couple of years due to the fact that the restrictions of getting into the native estate has been so heavy. There's been, and then we're getting protests on those plantations because we're clear falling the plantations. But that's how plantations operate. You plant them, you clear fall them, you plant them. It's ridiculous. A lot of propaganda that we've been doing clear falling in native forest is just not true. There's been no clear falling in native forest. There's been clear falling in native plantations, but not native forest. That's all I've got to say at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Pass to Mr. Veitch.
These microphones, yep, all good. Thanks, Mr. McPherson. There's a few things I just want to, if I could explore with you, particularly around private native forest. But the first thing I want to talk to you about is the, the power poles. So post the bushfires, so did you say your mill, you do power poles through your mill?
Our harvesting operations do power poles. As we're, as we're harvesting timber for the sawmills,
Yep.
we also cut power poles, harvest selectively log power poles out of the forest, what's optimal for power poles. And as well as we, there's logs, we cut crossarms out of the logs so they go on top of the power poles to hold the wires up. Without these, the cost of power to go to, to houses in the rural regions would be astronomical to put up concrete power poles everywhere.
So after the bushfire, when the bushfire went through, I, just in my mind, I dare say there would have been a pretty heavy request for new
Oh, yes.
timber power poles. So how did we go about meeting that demand? Did we have enough in storage or was there issues around the supply?
Oh, still flat out, just orders are still, yeah, just unlimited at the moment. Can't supply enough.
Okay. Now with regards to private native forests, we were fortunate yesterday to visit a PNF site or someone who's going through the, like, they're renewing their PNF, PvP, I think they said. Anyway, but we were talking to them and essentially they were saying it's just, there's no return for them to be involved. Like they gave us some dollars and cents and it just, it's just would appear from those dollars and cents that there's no money in it for them to be involved in PNF. Can I, as someone who's involved in, I take it, so you're harvesting selective trees as part of PNF? So what, just what are the dollars and cents involved from your end on this exercise? Like, how much do you charge or what, if you can? You may not be able to tell us.
It's pretty hard to put a figure on, on, on a, on an operation because most operations are different because state forest, other forest, forest conditions have different, different timber and that. So there's a lot of different values. You can go from, depending on how they've been harvested in the past as well, can affect the value of the timber. So if you get, if you, if it's been in the past, history hasn't been harvested to optimal recovery, well, that can reduce it. But we can range, like, you can range, you can range huge amounts, like, it depends on how big the property is, how many hectares of timber is to harvest. Yeah, so it's, I can take it on notice and get some rates, some extra rates.
If you could, that would be really good. But from, from your end, I guess, we heard yesterday from someone who actually is involved in the contracting, but that would be good too. Mr. McPherson?
Can I intercept there a bit? I've harvested those two decent sized paddocks on and off over time, over the whole drought period. And those farmers, our harvesting was what provided them with the income to keep feeding their cattle and keep their breeding stock there and not have to get rid of their cattle and then try and start all over again from scratch. So for them, it was a substantial amount of income for them.
Okay, yeah. I guess that's the balance. We just need to be able to get some information. So your, how big is your sawmill?
It's got about twenty people, up to twenty people at a time in it.
And, and so what about throughput? Like, what's throughput?
Throughput.
And volume?
Cuts about fifteen thousand cube of round log a year.
A year, yep. Okay. And how many other mills would there be of that size up here on the, on the coast?
Oh, there's a number of mills up there. I don't know how many I could take.
Okay, no, you don't. That's just, I was just trying to get an idea.
There's a number. I'm surprised there's not more here.
Yeah. And so with regards to the, so you, you've essentially got the operation where you go into the forest, a PNF, you selectively harvest, snig it out, bring it out, take it to your mill, process it through your mill and then sell?
Yep.
And so you spoke about power poles. What other markets are you involved in with your timber?
So we sell power poles, salvage quota and thinning's logs, girders, firewood logs. That's probably about it, I think.
Okay. And the last thing I want to ask, Mr. Chair, if I could, you were talking about financial assistance or other assistance from state government that you sort of require right now mainly because of, I dare say because of bushfires and subsequently the more recent floods and wet weather. What, just how do you see that, that assistance being delivered? What, what would that look like? If you had, if you had the minister here in front of you now, what would you be asking for?
I'd be asking for, for the smaller sawmills to be able to either get grants or, like, get a fair hearing on the grants or get financial assistance as far as loans, like grants through loans, like low, low interest loans to update the equipment and move into higher value adding such as laminated timber beams, seasoned, dry dressed timber, gasification charcoal, medical grade charcoal. A number of different things can be, like, not only value adding, but utilizing the waste better.
And so diversifying your income as well, like, so some sort of incentive to move to that sort of income diversification. Okay. Thanks, Chair.
Just looking to others for questions?
We've heard a number of times today that the industry is just not profitable. And it's losing money hand over fist essentially. Can I get a response from anyone, some people on that, whether you agree with that or disagree with that or have some facts to?
I disagree.
I disagree with that. Strongly disagree.
Yeah, if you fudge, if you fudge the figures, it's going to look like it's not profitable. You've got to take in consideration, I assume, are you talking about state forest estate or the private?
State forestry, yeah.
Yeah. If you take, take in consideration the amount of roads, like forest roads that forestry have to, or are supposed to up, maintain and keep upgraded. The fires, the amount of effort they go into training and, and for fighting fires, they're the most, my opinion is that state forest should have the lead on all state, all forest fires. They were the most successful at slowing the fires in the fire season. Most of the fires got away on national parks because it's very poorly robed. Very hard to fight. And then on top of that, they had watch and act and they forgot to act when they had the opportunity before the summer come. A number of fires should have been handled and pulled up a lot sooner. I know of one case where the national parks nearly burnt out a logging crew. That fire got away. And then whilst the fire got away on one side, the other side got away. It was reported, it was only really small, could have been handled and pushed out with a machine in a matter of minutes. But it was in national parks and they didn't want to take the machine into the national parks. The next day, that fire, oh, sorry, at the end of the week, that fire burnt nearly across Harbour and burned out a lot of homes and stuff. Through bad management.
Mr. Barrett, can I, can I please add to that? I completely disagree with the assertion that forestry is unprofitable. I think if you take a very, very narrow lens around, you know, perhaps harvesting all the revenues to the New South Wales Government through royalties, you might form the view that there's not much in it. But actually, when you look at the contribution that the whole industry makes and the downstream production and products that flows into makes to the economy of New South Wales, you have a very, very different picture. So I think it's mischievous to be taking such a narrow lens when, as I mentioned, the Ernst &amp; Young report noted that there was at least $1.1 billion of economic activity generated from the North Coast hardwood forests alone.
Another thing that seemed to come up a lot is what seemed like regular, consistent breaches of EPA codes and that sort of stuff. Is that what we're seeing in the field for you guys? Like, how often are you getting pins from EPA?
We, I, I've found that some people in EPA doing the auditing malicious with their auditing. They're over, like, over regulating it. Their, their view, so state forest, I believe, auditing, they're over-regulating it. Their view, so state forests, I believe, from what, this is my opinion, from what I see, they don't fight against the EPA enough, they don't challenge it in court enough. The simpler things as in the code, it says contractor must not heap debris against retained trees. So they take that right down to every stick. So it's got to be less than one metre. You can't put a heap next to a retained tree bigger than, higher than one metre within the distance of five metres. So in doing that, you, if you fall a tree and it knocks something over, they're classifying, even if it's only that round, like, right down to a leaf, like, a limb with leaves hanging up, they're classifying that as a breach. And I don't think that's the, I don't think that's the whole idea of that, of that rule or regulation with the heaping debris next to trees. I think the rule was designed so you didn't push up big piles of heads or bark against the trees and create fire and damage the tree and stop animals from climbing up the trees. So in doing that, what they've done is created a fire problem. So instead of the trees landing like they used to over the years, and if they were laying, like, a few branches and that was sticking up near the habitat tree, they were left there. The fire that burnt through that would burn through a lot cooler. Then if you put that head and heaped it up in a pile in windrows all around the forest, because there's that many retained trees in the forest now, you've got nowhere to stack the timber. So all the heads, all the leftover heads are cut up and stacked in piles, creating a bonfire, or through the, bonfires all through the forest, creating a bigger problem than leaving the heads spread out.
Did you have something to add to that, Mr. Davies?
Yeah, look, there's an awful lot of rules and regulations that govern forest harvesting. And, you know, any auditing you do, in any, you know, whether it's health and safety auditing, anything else, it's always possible to find things that are breaches. But whether they were practical to manage at the time is, you know, is the thing that's often overlooked. So a good example would be hollow-bearing trees. There's a requirement that all hollow-bearing trees have to be retained. But the fact that you may not be able to assess whether there is a hollow in a tree, prior to it hitting the ground, is, you know, makes it very difficult to say 100% that you, that there won't be a tree fallen down. So a good example I saw for, where the pin notice that came, there was a tree that was fallen, had a branch that was coming out of it. That branch was hollow. As it fell, the branch snapped off, so there was a hollow in the thing. There was a pin notice issued for that. Now, there was no way that the people involved could have recognised that that tree had had a hollow bearing in it.
Are you saying that there is currently a prohibition on harvesting all hollow-bearing trees?
Yes.
That's not my understanding of how the CEIFOA operates at all. Maybe some of the bushfire-affected forests, in their site-specific conditions, but that's not enforced anymore?
So forestry have taken a precautionary approach over most of the harvesting now.
So a decision by forestry corporation? So they're not enforceable either, by the EPA? You'd agree?
The particular incident I was referring to was a fire-affected forest, so.
Oh, so back when there was the post-fire site-specific?
But the conditions in the harvesting plans are enforceable by the EPA. They can, you can get a pin for breach in the harvesting plan. So whatever's in the harvesting plan.
I don't, I don't, I disagree with you. I'm not sure that's.
So another example is any, anything that's dead, and this is in non-burnt forest as well, anything that is dead, and I forget what, I'd have to take the size, the diameter size on notice, I think it's about 30 centimetres, and over three metres tall is classified as a dead tree, and can't have anything fell within five metres of it, over a metre high. And then, so then what you're getting is, you're getting old, as ridiculous as old bulky stunts, where they're going up on the boards, have been retained as dead trees. Broken off stuff that's windblown and broken off in a storm, over three metres high, has been classified as a dead tree. And there, if you've got a pile of dirt in a restricted zone, any little thing, they've been prosecuted, like, they've best been taking it to the ends of meat, and state forests hasn't been fighting against it.
Chair, if I could, unless you've got any more, Sam. Just on that point of EPA sending a lot of warning letters to, I think you were talking about private native forestry operations. They publish all of that information on their website. I think in the 2021 year, there was a total advisory letters across all of New South Wales of 17 sent out. That's advisory letters, formal warnings, official cautions. In the last 12 months, none at all have been sent out. So you're just saying that this information's inaccurate?
I dispute that. Because I've got a, example is a, is, the maps are supplied by local land services, used to be supplied by the EPA. Classic example is the filter strip didn't run exactly on the map, and we run our GPS off our phones, so they're not 100% accurate. The gully, the gully run in about 20 metres difference on the map, the crossing was marked on the map where the filter strip was marked on the map. And they've sent me a show cause, show cause letters, and one of them is for that filter strip not being marked correctly on the map. Now, they've, and the forestry have.
You might have been one of the seven in the last five years, show cause.
No, 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 this is, this is in the last 12 months.
Yeah, that's in the last 12 months, okay. Well, there was one show cause letter, sorry, in 2021, so maybe that was you. But yeah, okay, I'll take your point. The one issue that's come up is.
There's one issue this year.
Okay. One issue that's come up has been certainty for the industry. And I know that there's currently renegotiations of wood supply agreements happening for the North Coast. I'm just wondering where you stand. Have you settled on an agreement with forestry corporation for your wood supply agreements at this point?
We're 100% our private property. We don't get any logs off forestry. It's all.
Oh, you don't have a wood supply agreement with?
Wood supply agreement, no. We're 100%.
You harvest, you have a harvesting contract though with forestry corporation?
I've got a harvesting contract.
Okay, but you don't take any of that timber for your mill? Okay. Right, so you only, you get that 15,000 cubic metres a year, all from private native forestry. Do you harvest all of that yourself, or is some of that come from other harvesting contractors?
Some comes from our own private, private native harvesting company, and then others comes, like, I supply some from my company, and then there's, some comes from other companies or other contractors, so they're not all companies.
Okay. What's your catchment for that?
Oh, it's getting bigger. Queensland border, down to Tauri, and increasing out to, in Voral.
Is there a reason you don't take from forestry corporation, or you just haven't been able to get a wood supply agreement?
We cut higher-value products, high-grade products, so there's only salvage available. Back in the day, Boral.
This is because Boral's got it all, right?
No, no. Boral, back in the day, Boral and state, the Labor State Government made deals to keep Boral quiet when they're locking up the forest. And Boral was buying out sawmills, shutting them down and moving the quota. Pantech owns Boral now, so I've got no opinion on Pantech. I don't know. The way they run the business is probably, it's, yeah. But the monopoly, they have got a monopoly due to the past. It's not due to now. It's from the past. They've got a monopoly on their quota, so.
I guess my key point was, or question was, do you, you know, you can make a timber business operate from private native forestry operations?
We've, there's a number of timber industries logging from private native forestry, and as I said in the opening statement, the resources there, but getting supply is difficult. You can't go and force people in private native forests to cut their property. There's enough, like, there's enough there for the industry, for the sawmills that are there now. If you was to reduce the forestry, the state forest, that is going to put enormous pressure. It'd probably send us out of business. Because there's just not enough to support, support what goes into Pantark and all the other sawmills of forestry.
I might just ask a question then of Mr. Davidson. Just to get a sense, I think stat indicated that two-thirds of the high-quality sawmills go through Pantark's. It's four facilities you've got up here, is that right?
Yes, we've got two green mills and two dry mills, or three dry mills, so to say.
Okay. Though, what percentage of the throughput comes from your forestry corporation wood supply agreements versus private native forestry?
About 90%. So we buy quite a bit of private property material, but we sell quite a lot of state forest logs as well. So we enrich in our mix of the species that we want by buying material and then on-sell it to others in the industry.
Sorry, what do you mean by that?
So there are certain species where other sawmills can.
Because you've got the preferred black butt contract, you on-sell some of that black butt to the private mills?
No, no, we don't sell our black butt.
All right.
We keep our black butt and process that. But we sell in other species, sell out other species that, where other mills can be more profitable than we.
But 90% comes from your forestry corporation?
That's correct, yes.
Which run until 2028?
Eight, yes.
And you haven't been renegotiating anything there with government?
No.
At all. What are the primary outputs? Like, can you break it down in sort of percentage terms, from the North Coast facilities? What are the primary retail products, as sort of a percentage that comes out of your mills?
Very roughly, and it does change year on year, but very roughly, you'd be, you know, a third to, you know, 40% would be structural timber. You know, so your high-quality beams, they're used for, you know, lintels for LVL, for roof trusses, you know, frame and truss plants, you know, that type of material. Decking would be the, about a third again, and flooring, so decking, cladding and flooring would be the, about the other third.
And what's the total throughput? Well, we've got 15,000 from Mr. McPherson. Are you all a lot bigger than that? But what's the total?
So we would put through our mills about 110,000 a year.
110,000, yeah, that's okay. Chair, I'm happy to move on.
Yeah, sure. We've probably only got about a minute. I might just throw one question out. We heard today a theory from some constituents or stakeholders that there was a conscious attempt by forestry operators to essentially create a monoculture of black butt in a lot of the forests around here. So then essentially turn it into a plantation via stealth. I guess I would gauge your response to that accusation. Have you seen evidence of it? Is it just mischievous propaganda, as you've indicated on others? Or, you know, I guess I'm gauging a response to that accusation, giving you a chance to balance the ledger.
Do you want to go on that?
Yep. With any native harvesting, the type of harvesting you do varies over the cycle. So if you're doing, say, four lots of harvesting over, you know, 150 years, the first harvest, you take the better quality trees out. Over time, you get to a stage where the material that's left in the bush is generally of a poorer quality. That's where the reset harvesting is required, where you take those poorer species. Generally, at that point, because there's more disturbance, you get predominance of a single species coming up. Then over time, that composition of the bush will change back to, you know, a more normal, and then a more poorer quality bush over time.
I don't believe that that statement's correct. I think it's totally false. Under the rules and regulations that we're working under, it was a, probably a thing that was done 50 years ago, when they used to go through and tSI the bush. They used to go and kill the certain species out and let the black butt grow. But that doesn't happen on the harvesting operations now. We don't, we've got, when it gets marked, it's, they've got to leave a mixture of species that are there. What does happen is the actual harvesting probably promotes the black butt a little bit better with the machine damage and the regrowth. But, yeah, it's not true. They're not, the forestry doesn't log to only grow one species back. It's, it just comes back naturally.
Sure. Well, it pretty much takes us to time.
It's like a simple word answer. I just wondered, we got, Mr. McPherson indicated about 20 odd guys at his facilities. How many are you directly employing on the North Coast through all four facilities?
We'd have closer to 200.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, well, that, yeah, that pretty much takes us to time. So thank you very much. I don't believe you guys took any questions on notice, but if you have, the committee secretary will be in touch. But once again, thanks for coming and giving evidence. It was much appreciated. Yeah, we only need three members. Okay, we now welcome our next witness, Mr. Graham, who is the Managing Director of Bellegan Nature Company and Bellegan Nature Tours. I would just ask you to state your full name, position, title, and swear either an oath or affirmation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Mark Graham. I'm the Managing Director of the Bellegan Nature Company and the operator of Bellegan Nature Tours. I'm also an ecologist of some decades on the North Coast. I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And do you have a short opening statement that you'd like to provide?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much for the invitation to deliver evidence today. I very much appreciate that. I am an ecologist. I've worked for federal, state, and local government on koala conservation, ecological assessment, landscape regeneration, and fire management since the mid-1990s. In the years preceding 2020, I was employed by New South Wales Treasury as a bushfire expert, researching, educating, and actively managing fire across New South Wales as part of the Hot Spots Fire Project. I've also served in governing roles on Cops Harbour City Council and as a member of the Cops Coast Tourism Board. I've been in this part of the world most of my life. I have the greatest of respect for country and for the health of the forests that surround Cops Harbour. I, and many members of the community that I'm part of, are alarmed by the impacts that are currently occurring to the public forest estate through industrial logging regimes done by the Forestry Corporation of New South Wales. We're very concerned about those impacts because they are directly and adversely impacting upon the regional economy. Our regional economy is underpinned by the tourism industry, and the health and the vitality of our forests is the critical product that a significant proportion of our regional economy is underpinned by. As well as that, our agricultural industry and our fishing industry are critically reliant upon water security that is provided by healthy native forests. And we've seen in recent years significant industrial logging of the public forest estate, such that it has severely impacted upon water security by impacting upon water quality. So heavily mechanized industrial logging operations, creating major pollution to many of our critical catchment areas, and the removal of that biomass, reducing the holding. and the removal of that biomass reducing the holding capacity of those forests to provide base flow. Now, well over a hundred thousand municipal residents between Sawtell and Yambah derive their drinking water supply from the Nimboida River and in a secondary sense from the Arrara River to the west of Coffs Harbour. Sadly, significant chunks of both of those water supply catchment areas have had substantial industrial logging operations in recent years. And then we had the Black Spring and Black Summer Fires. And we've seen in and across the landscape that the industrially logged areas have burnt really hot and really fast. And the scientific evidence is really strong that industrial logging of our forests makes fires much worse. That further erodes our water security. So all of our municipal residents, our tourism industry, our agricultural industry, and our fishing industry, which are a substantial majority of our regional economy, are demonstrably being adversely impacted by industrial logging operations currently being undertaken by forestry corporation. This area is central to the biggest koala population, wild koala population in New South Wales. And sadly, we're seeing a significant number of existing operations and scheduled operations in what are known to be the most significant areas of public native forest for their koala habitat values. If we truly want koalas to remain viable and to avoid the extinction of the koalas, we need to protect these critical areas of habitat. The science on that is absolutely irrefutable. And sadly, we're actually seeing to this very day the logging of koala habitat. Most recently, we've seen it through many of the hinterland forests on the coast range and the Dorrego Plateau, which is recognized to be one of the most critical parts of the Australian landscape for maintenance of a viable koala population into the future. So I come before you today to bring forward some important facts and evidence about what is occurring in the public forest estate and to bring to you significant concerns about the management of this estate. And particularly to speak on behalf of our regional economy, where we know that the majority of jobs and our economic future and our water security is entirely underpinned by the health and the intactness of our forests. And to put it really, really simply, the operations currently being undertaken upon the public forest estate are in no way sustainable. They are highly unsustainable. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking to Mr Veatch to leave the questions.
I'll start off. I'm just, I was pretty keen, you piqued my interest when you mentioned fishing and the impact on fishing by logging operations, or as you're saying, industrial logging operations. Can you, I think it would be good if you could explain in a little bit of detail just what is the impact on fishing? And also, are you talking about commercial or recreational or both?
Simple answer, I'm talking about both. Thank you for the question, Mr Veatch. I've sat upon the Solitary Islands Marine Park Advisory Committee in a number of capacities. Off our shore here, the Solitary Islands Marine Park was the first marine protected area in New South Wales. It's also an incredibly important and rich commercial and recreational fishing area. The science is very clear that the health of a catchment, its integrity, its flows, and the inputs of organic material from mature and intact forests drive fisheries productivity. We know for a fact that three quarters of our commercial fishing species, fisheries species are critically dependent upon the health of our estuaries. We've seen major impacts and harm to our catchments and our estuarine systems, which are literally driving the productivity of both our commercial and recreational fishing industries. Of course, recreational fishing is our nation's greatest recreational pursuit. And the Coffs Harbour, the Coffs Coast, is incredibly sought after by tourists to come here, to spend money, and to go fishing. And there are still great opportunities for that to occur in quite a sustainable sense. You go down to the Fisherman's Co-op here on in the Clarence, we've got the greatest plethora of beautiful seafood imaginable. If our catchments and forests are well managed, our fishing industries will follow. Currently, they're not being well managed. And the impacts particularly upon estuarine health and inputs of pollutants into the marine environment are directly harming recreational and commercial fishing.
And you would include aquaculture such as oysters in that as well?
Absolutely. So we know for a fact that healthy forested catchments put out clean water with a lack of pathogens. They've got a capacity to remain healthy. We're seeing through landscape scale industrial logging regimes and other impacts serious harm to our oyster industry whereby the waters become polluted for weeks or months after wet events, and it takes that industry out of action. There's an order placed upon them that they're not able to sell on the market. And, you know, we're in the, an absolutely record wet phase. And we've seen most of our oyster industries severely impacted by that. Healthy catchments and intact forests equal sustainable productivity in all of our fishing industries.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. To others for questions?
As, throughout this debate, from all sides, we've been thrown science. You know, this report, that report, you know, the science says this, the science says that. A lot of that science, irrefutable science, is contradictory to someone else's irrefutable science. As someone that's not a scientist, how do I weigh through that and determine which science is correct and which is to, you know, further someone's case?
Thank you for that question. I think that's a really important question about where we are as a society, and I dare say as civilization. Whenever I look at published scientific evidence, I always look at who that's being written by and whether or not there is a vested interest. And sadly, I've seen some recent research published by a member of the Forestry Corporation, for example alleging that there isn't harm being done to our koala populations by industrial logging. I've then looked at a significant further body of evidence written by scientists who are not of a particular vested interest, which tells me very strongly that our koalas are severely endangered. There's been prior to the fires about a halving of their populations. And then in this region with the fires, we've had about a thirty percent additional decline. It is difficult for a layperson and a lay audience to filter and process and gain an understanding of science. I think it comes down to the rigor, the repeatability, and the quality of the writing up of particular research results and the conclusions arrived at. I always look to an academic for their published history and their industry or professional affiliations. And there are certainly some of the best ecologists and forest ecologists in the world in Australia. In fact, Australia is a nation that has a greater proportion, a greater number per the proportion of our society of natural area scientists anywhere in the world. And the majority of scientific evidence is telling us that we need to manage our forests for the benefits that they provide to our economy and our future. And as I've made hopefully very clear, current management of the public forest estate is not serving the public interest and it's leading to direct adverse impacts upon our economy.
I'll just have a couple of questions and I'll throw to Mr Field. Picking up on some of the comments you made about commercial fishing and its impact, can you point to any local research that's been done in terms of the impact on commercial fishing? Because talking to commercial fishermen, they say the greatest threat to the industry at the moment is the twenty sixteen reforms that was done by this government in terms of the quota system and how that skewed the management of the resource, particularly in the estuaries. You know, they're saying there's more traps in the water than there ever has been because of this reform. And everyone's fighting over, you know, a finite resource. So can you point to any research that's been done about, you know, that quantifies that impact on commercial fishing?
Well, fair-
If you, if you can take it on notice, that's fine.
I could offer, and I would also be very welcoming to provide further input on that matter. Thanks so much for the question, Mr Chair. The best body of research relevant to our local area is the several decades now of research done upon the Solitary Islands Marine Park, which has a number of zones. It's, as most marine protected areas, it's run by zoning with the highest category being sanctuary, no-take zones. And that research has shown very clearly that those catchment areas, so to the west of Coffs Harbour here, and we're actually in the southernmost part of the catchment of the Solitary Islands Marine Park here, that catchment extends up the coastline to the Clarence Valley. And all of the coastal catchments off the coast range here drain into the Solitary Islands Marine Park. And those catchments that have greater forest cover and protection of forests support the most healthy fish and invertebrate assemblages. And there's a significant body of taxpayer publicly funded research done by the Solitary Islands Marine Park that demonstrates this. So the catchments that have the greatest health and productivity are those that are a bit further north. And what we've seen in recent years in some of these southern catchment areas has been extensive clearance of vegetation and industrial logging and sadly, some, a fair bit of coastal sprawl. And sadly, where that has occurred, we've seen the death of these really critical estuarine systems. And I'd use the example of Hearns Lake, which is south of Wurkoga. It's officially now dead because of abuse of its catchment. There's been really significant body of research published which has documented the decline of that system, such that it's no longer a nursery habitat. It's a pretty toxic wasteland.
Can I just go to your, before I throw back to Mr Barrett, can I just go to, obviously, your company or serious company, Bellegan Nature Company? You would be a beneficiary of the Great Koala National Park if it eventuated. And I think there was some figures, there's been some figures thrown out there, about nine thousand jobs, but that figure is sort of unclear as to how many of them would be direct jobs, whether those nine thousand would ever actually eventuate. You know, a lot of figures thrown around eco tourism, to be fair, you know, never really truly eventuate, never can really be, you know, rock solid. So I guess the question is, how many, how many people do you employ now? And how many people do you envisage employing if something like the Great Koala National Park came into fruition?
Thank you for the question, Mr Chair. I currently don't have employees. I started trading at the beginning of Covid twenty twenty, and there've been multiple, in all honesty, there've been multiple waves of Covid, and it frankly hasn't stopped, right?
Yeah.
My trading environment has been very challenging. I do, however, have a network of local affiliates, associates, friends, and colleagues who, when conditions for trading improve, I would be seriously wanting to expand. Currently, I mostly visit private property. I run a network of private conservation reserves from Bellegan up onto the Dorrego Plateau. So most of my current business opportunities revolve around privately managed areas. All of my guests come to this region for the natural environment, and they recognize that this is one of the best areas for koalas, to see koalas and to experience them in the wild. And my guests come here and they love the clean rivers. They love seeing whole valleys in forests. They love getting into those valleys. And they tell me, because they come to the region and stay in accommodation and spend money more broadly in the economy, they tell me that they are horrified when they drive through areas that have been industrially logged within the public forest estate. For example, we've got in the Nimboida River, I'd mentioned it earlier, as being our regional water supply. It's also the best whitewater rafting system in New South Wales.
I'm just conscious of time, Mr Graham.
Sure.
But you, you don't have any forecasted figures in terms of, obviously, getting past Covid, which obviously was bad timing for starting a tourist company. You don't have any forecasted figures as to what would be your likely uptake of employees?
I would hope within five years to have five to ten employees. I've already kind of got them as friends and affiliates. And I would be looking at trading off the Great Koala National Park because it is such an attractive proposition. So many of our tourists want to see koalas in the wild, almost all.
Sure. I'll quickly throw to Mr Barrett and then back to Mr Field.
How much, the damage you're talking about to the fishing and the natural environment, talk to me about the difference between the damage done by forestry and the damage done by urban sprawl and just the general operations of Coffs Harbour City.
Sure. Coastal sprawl, as the name implies, is along the coastline. So a lot of those ecosystems are not forested. They're not areas of high biomass and water. But coastal sprawl creates big problems for nature. Creates pollution into the marine and estuarine environment, and it creates barriers to the movement of fauna species. Within the forested hinterland, industrial logging operations create significant gaps and voids in the fabric of the forest. Those voids are also very fire prone, so there's a downward spiral that occurs in terms of ecosystem health. Because we are at the point where the Great Dividing Range extends down the Greater Scarpment into the coast, and Coffs Harbour is the southernmost point that that happens, a lot of our wildlife migrates seasonally from the coast up into the mountain ranges and also up and down the east coast, so migratory species. And the more of these industrially logged gaps there are in the forest, the more species loss there is because they are a direct blockage to the movement of species. And we've definitely noticed that in places such as the Dorrego Plateau in recent times.
Chair, if I could, and I'd just declare that I spent some time out in the forest with Mr Graham earlier this week. There's a lot of forest out there, Mr Graham. Some of it's in protected areas already, national park, and also some of the areas of state forests that are not harvestable. So how does an idea like the Great Koala National Park change things in terms of forest health and the viability of that area as a tourism attraction? But also, what does it mean for forest health more generally to remove logging practices from those areas? Because, you know, there's a lot of trees out there.
Put simply, the cessation, and thank you for the question, Mr Field, put simply, the cessation of industrial logging across the proposed Great Koala National Park provides a viable future, not just for koalas, but for other species that have declined significantly. And some of them are verging on extinction, such as the Greater Glider, which has recently been surveyed at a hundred sites locally where it was historically known, and it's completely disappeared. So the size of the proposal is what will provide a viable lifeline to our globally significant biodiversity. And the science underpinning that is very, very clear, that having large, connected, or well-connected conservation areas, which is definitely what the proposed Great Koala National Park is, provides the greatest opportunity of achieving the best conservation of biodiversity. As we're seeing increasingly severe fires, droughts, and extreme events, having a greater mass of forest provides the best opportunity for securing the future for our globally significant biodiversity.
Now, in addition to your tourism business and interest, you're an ecologist, as you've mentioned. I know you've spent a lot of time in logged areas, I guess, you know, in some ways, citizen monitoring of forestry's activities. We were out with Forestry Corporation yesterday, and I don't want to put words in their mouth, but the sense that I got from what they were saying is that a healthy forest is a managed forest and that logging is one of those management tools that enables forest health to be maintained and that just allowing them to grow old is not necessarily a healthy forest. I wouldn't mind your response to that sort of notion.
There's a significant body of scientific evidence that directly contravenes or proposes that what was expressed to you? that what was expressed to you. I'd use the example of the Kalang Headwaters. The Kalang is the southern tributary of the Bellinger River. It is an area that has had no industrial logging since the 1980s. It provides critical water supply to the people in the valley and the fisheries that are down at the, at the mouth of the river at Yoranga. That area has very few weeds because it hasn't had recent disturbances. When the Anderson's Creek Fire went through that area, because it hadn't been industrially logged, when the fire hit those areas, the fire dropped in severity and actually went out and we'd, we'd seen some of those, those areas. So forests, because of the impacts of modern humanity, forests definitely need active management, they need management for weeds, and there are lots of weeds in places like the north coast. Fire requires active management and to an extent vertebrate pest species require active management, sometimes erosion as well. But that can all be done external to an industrial logging regime. And if there is an industrial logging regime within those forests, species decline in populations and local extinctions occur, water security is compromised, and those areas that are currently lacking in weeds are opened up, there's a lot of soil disturbance and opening at the canopy, such that those areas then become heavily weed infested. And we saw some of those areas where Lantana, which is a weed of national significance, Crofton weed and blue billy goat weed were coming up in abundance in recently industrially logged areas. So maintaining those forests as a whole and not going in and mechanically disturbing them is what's needed for their viability. So I fundamentally disagree with what was stated to you in terms of the future of forests needing to be logged. The science is very clear that that's a process of degradation. And particularly when it comes to water security, that's really alarming because Australia, the Murray Darling Basin in particular, is really drying out. And I, I suspect that in coming years, the water security that exists on the eastern side of the great dividing range, centered on places like Coffs Harbour, will actually become increasingly valuable to our society. And we're actually seeing that, we're seeing investment, so farmers from out west selling up because of a lack of water security and then bringing their capital to the coast, to the Dorigo Plateau, to the, the northern beaches of Coffs Harbour, because they recognise that water security, which is underpinned and driven by the health of our forests, is what they need for a viable agricultural enterprise.
Thank you. Chair, I think we're getting pretty close.
We are. If there's no other questions.
Oh, just a quick one, Chair.
Always got to get in.
Afternoon, Mr Graham. In your submission, your closing comments is one of optimism in relation to opportunities. If the region was to transition along the, along the lines of your submission, where, how would it look like? How would it evolve and, and how would the timber industry look like?
Thank you. That's a wonderful question. Thank you, Mr Pulis. The skills and experience of those in the forest industry can be readily redeployed to the management of bushfires, the rehabilitation of landscapes, broad scale revegetation, including for the plantation estate. And frankly, there are not that many jobs in the logging industry, and I've attempted to make that clear in my presentation. And in terms of just fair and equitable outcomes, by completely protecting our forest estate and redeploying the people who have those skills and experience, there actually is a very positive future. And that's a future in which there could be greater carbon drawdown, and the science is pretty clear that we now need to start to look at carbon drawdown, and trees are the only proven carbon capture and storage technology available. And that the health of our fisheries and agricultural industries and the viability of those industries can be shored up by a complete transition of this industry. And I think we do need to recognise that, yes, people deserve to have continuity of employment, but it's demonstrable that the, the consequences of the current employment are adversely impacting a significant chunk of the regional economy and a lot of other people's jobs, livelihoods and lifestyles are being compromised. So I am an incredible optimist and I think that there are amazing opportunities around the Coffs coast for setting up plantations, rehabilitated landscapes, an incredible diversity of agricultural productivity, because we go from sea level here where you can grow Indonesian tropical species to 25 kilometres that way where you can grow cherries. And there's almost nowhere else in the world that that happens. And the full productive potential of this region is nowhere near met. We have the water, we have a climate with incredibly productive opportunities, and I really do think that there is a massive need, an urgent need, to transition from an industrial logging regime to a forest management regime which maintains those values and underpins our economy and our employment base into the future.
Thank you. That pretty much takes us to time. So thank you, Mr Graham, for appearing before us. I may believe you took maybe one question unnoticed, so the committee secretary will be in touch and you'll have 21 days to get a response back.
I'd be so delighted to follow up. And thank you once more for the opportunity to come and present evidence today. I hope you're enjoying your time up here on the north coast.
Yep, thank you very much. We will now break for lunch till about 1.15. To this afternoon's session, we now have various representatives from several conservation groups. So starting with, I might actually go from my right this time and give Miss Blaine a chance to get settled. Starting with you, Mr Morrison, can you state your name, position, title and swear either an oath or affirmation? I believe you've got the words provided to you.
Yeah, James Alexander Morrison, with the North East Forest Alliance and the North Coast Environment Council. I solemnly, solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
My name's Dylan Pugh, president of the North East Forest Alliance. I would like to solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Mr Redpath?
My name's Phil Redpath, I'm a member of the Clarence Valley Conservation Coalition. And I would solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
My name's Leonie Blaine. I am the honorary secretary of the Clarence Valley Conservation Coalition. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And starting back with you, Mr Morrison, did you want to start with a short opening statement?
Yeah, I've got a brief, one page thing here. My role as chairman of the Bell Miner Dieback Associated Dieback Working Group for 15 years, from 2001 to 16, provided extensive insights into appropriate forest management and I'm widely considered an expert in the BMAID issue. The New South Wales forestry sector describes itself as a sustainable industry, protecting ecologically sustainable forest management. Their inability to manage BMAID post-logging in moist at-risk forests is just one example that belies any claims of sustainable forest management as espoused by Forest Corpse and its industry proponents. Bell Miner Associated Dieback is a key threatening process that involves a complex interaction of bell miner birds, sillet insects and dense weedy understories usually of Lantana. It is a very serious forest health issue that has been increasing in severity in the area over the past two decades. Forest research experts, including Forest Corpse, Dr Christine Stone in 1999, the New South Wales Scientific Committee in 2006, and more recently an independent systematic literature review in 2017, have each identified forest disturbance as the primary causal factor in the initiation of bell miner dieback. However, Forest Corpse have continually rejected this claim despite their own research scientists making the claims, and continue to log at-risk forests, providing no post-logging rehabilitation, which is exasperating the problem. Adaptive management trials by Forest Corp at Mount Lindsay and Donaldson State Forest, supported by the Bell Miner Working Group, have failed to demonstrate that Forest Corpse have any ability to manage this key threatening process post-logging. BMAID is particularly severe in the forests of the Border Ranges and Richmond Range, where left untreated has resulted in patches of dead trees up to 20 hectares in size with little chance of recovery and is an increasing problem in moist coastal forests down the eastern seaboard. There are more than 100,000 hectares of forest impacted in north east New South Wales alone, with more than 2 million hectares at risk statewide. Forest Corpse own research indicates a cost of 200 to 2.5 thousand dollars per hectare, depending on severity, to just begin to rehabilitate these forests. It is clear that the productive moist claret full forests at risk of BMAID are extremely difficult and costly to manage post-logging, due primarily to weed invasion, which requires ongoing active treatment over many years to overcome. This is almost impossible across rugged terrain, as in the escarpment forests. The cost of appropriate mitigation would far exceed the economic turns from, returns from logging. Many of these BMAID impacted forests should now be considered beyond viable commercial management. Yet Forest Corp continue to log BMAID at risk and affected forests with no effective mitigation plans to address the downward spiral in forest health. This reduction in the regenerative capacity of our native forests cannot be considered to be either economically or ecologically sustainable and will significantly impact on future timber supplies. The most appropriate management for these forests is to totally avoid disturbance and undertake effective long-term rehabilitation to ensure the non-timber values of these high conservation forests are secured. Thank you.
Thank you. That did look like a pre-prepared statement. Would you be able to provide that to Hanso, that'll just help with transcription?
Sure.
So we did it right? Thank you. Either Mr Redpath or Miss Blaine, did you have a short opening statement?
I'll start off, Phil. Yeah, the Clarence Valley Conservation Coalition, which has been in existence for, since 1988, and it came into existence over forestry matters to do with a proposed pulp mill in the Clarence Valley. From that time on, the CVCC has been very concerned about matters to do with the viability and the health and sustainability of the forests in our area, but not only in our area and elsewhere as well. We are also interested in things like, obviously, water supply and things of that nature. We, in our submission, ask that native forest logging, public native forest logging in New South Wales be phased out because we consider that it isn't sustainable, either ecologically or economically. And we're hoping that with some of the material you people, the committee has been hearing in the public hearings as well as in the submissions you've received, that you will come to accept that this is something that's very necessary. Certainly, the New South, the Victorian and Western Australian governments are moving that way. And I believe that there's an enormous increase in community support for doing just that. I think Phil's got a few things he'd like to add.
Okay. My name's Phil Redpath. I used to work for the New South Wales State Government as a frontline scientist dealing with a whole range of environmental legislation. I helped implement SEPT 46 tree clearing legislation, was involved in the Plantation and Reforestation Act, I was involved in the Ruafires Act, the EPA Act, the Threatened Species Conservation Act and various other state environmental planning policies. I was the ecological representative on the BMAID Working Group, working for DAWC. I've been involved in long-term monitoring and research in various land tenures, private and public, state forests and national parks. And I've been, I've done long-term threatened species monitoring on birds like the rufous scrub bird. During that time, I noticed, particularly when we went into state forests, there used to be a forestry research division that had high credibility, had. They used to put in, they would leave unlogged components to logging coops where you could go in and monitor what was happening in those retained, undamaged plots and compare that to what was happening with the logged plot, what was, what was happening in the rest of the coop from a logging perspective. So there'd be pre and post-logging measurements. The industry has become so rapacious that it no longer leaves those monitoring plots. So you can't tell, there's no evidence being left to actually tell whether the forestry operations that are being undertaken are maintaining the biodiversity of a site. For instance, some of the sites we looked at originally might have had 15 to 20 species of overstory trees in plots, now they've got one. So forestry has been creating what I would call or define as plantations by stealth. So they're actually creating monocultures where black butt might be the only tree growing. And they say that that's sustainable. It is not sustainable. Those forests are highly susceptible to a whole range of different perturbations, whether it be a fungal attack where, like myrtle rust, or whether it be a fire attack where the whole lot's taken out at one time. Some trees are less susceptible to fire attack than others. We've also put in a, a paper that was recently published by Lyndon Meyer et al., which clearly demonstrates that forestry operations actually make forests more fire prone. And that's been an argument that forestry have used indiscriminately to say that logging practices actually reduce fire threat, they don't, they actually increase it quite exponentially because it gives fire an opportunity to run into the canopy and once it gets into the canopy, it runs across landscapes. I did a, a report, I'm also an adjunct fellow at Macquarie University and I teach base grade students how to undertake environmental analysis. And I've, I've learned a few things from that in how to present information. And I was given the opportunity a couple of years ago to present some information on, I was actually asked to do a talk on koalas. And there was, everybody was doing talks on koalas, so I thought I'd do a talk on hollow bearing trees. And I focused a little bit on the north coast, it was broad. I went from data that included how many birds, different fauna, frogs, micro bats and reptiles use hollow bearing trees for some part of their lifecycle across Australia. And then I looked at how many of them were located on the north coast based on the boundary of the Queensland border, the New England Highway and Port Macquarie. And I came up with some really alarming figures, which I hadn't realised just how problematic it was. So the number of hollow bearing species of birds as an example, I'll just give you two. There are 64 known hollow bearing, hollow bearing birds that use hollow bearing trees. The number of birds Australia wide is 114, which is, and the total north coast percentage is 56%. So 56% of hollow using birds across Australia are found on the north coast and 16 of those are threatened species. So that gives you an idea of, you know, just how problematic the loss of hollow bearing trees is. Micro bats, tiny little bats, number of hollow using species north coast is 21 as opposed to 51 Australia wide, which is 41% of the total, and nine of those are threatened species. So I can't stress to you enough as an ecologist how alarming it is that the number of retained hollow bearing trees within forestry plots is in decline deliberately by the numbers that have been given by the political process through, through legislation. There's a lot of things I can talk about, but I'll make one thing really, really clear. Having worked as a frontline scientist dealing with environmental legislation, I can say this, it is not written like criminal law, it should be. It is not easy to use, it is incredibly difficult from a regulatory perspective. It is not easy to use, it is incredibly difficult from a regulatory perspective because it's written with doublespeak, it's full of exclusions and exemptions, it is not transparent. And my suggestion for this group is if you're rewriting legislation or redrafting legislation, it should be written like criminal law, it should have punitive offences, because we're getting to the point where we can no longer afford to say, "Yeah, Jimmy's logging that tree, it's okay." It's not. If it's illegal, it should be treated as a criminal offence. All the legislation, depending on how you look at it, should be transparent. The processes that you go through for determining the biomass of the forests that are going to be logged needs to be transparent, it needs to be scientifically based. If you're looking at, you know, how much timber is going to be allocated to a contract, that needs to be transparent, it needs to be open to public scrutiny, and it certainly should not have caveats in it that give compensation to logging companies when the timber resource isn't there. And finally, as a parliamentary group, you have a responsibility for the taxpayers of New South Wales to ensure that the legislation you put through does those things, because if it doesn't, all we're doing is, you know, death by a thousand cuts to our native forests. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking for... Yeah, sure. No, thank you.
Forests support our civilisation, climate and biodiversity. A walk in the forest improves your health, their transpiration generates rainfall and cools surrounding lands, they store water, cool the runoff and regulate stream flows, they take carbon out of the atmosphere, store it in their trunks and soils and give us back oxygen. They reduce flood risk by storing water and slowing flows, they reduce land slips by reinforcing soils, and they support most of our biodiversity. North-east New South Wales forests are one of the world's centres of endemicism, and they're identified as being of world heritage value. As well as supporting a multitude of plants and animals found nowhere else in the world, they are of increasing importance as a refuge for species declining elsewhere. Forests are under increasing threat due to the increasing droughts, heat waves, wildfires and floods caused by climate heating. Increasing droughts and heat waves are killing trees and wildlife across the land, unable to cope with the extremes. Increasing frequencies vary in extent of wildfires are killing trees and wildlife in their millions, increasing erosion and polluting streams. The 2019-20 wildfires devastated 2.4 million hectares of north-east New South Wales, encompassing 29% of the region, and around half the remnant vegetation. As soon as our rainforests were burnt in the fires, the burning of rainforests is akin to the bleaching of coral reefs, and is likely to follow a similar trajectory. Numerous hollow-bearing trees were burnt out and cut down for fire control. Eucalyptus flowering was set back for years. Many understory seed trees, such as forest oaks used by Gosse and Vakokotus, were killed. Impacts are immense and long-lasting, with surviving species of plants and animals across extensive areas now their tolerance limit for disturbance. So Siobhan's killed, a lot are just teetering on the brink. And in some areas, they got past it. 19 Australian ecosystems, seven of them forests, have been identified as already in collapse. In north-east New South Wales, we are perisically close to a cascading series of feedbacks that cause the irreversible decline of forest ecosystems and the release of vast quantities of carbon stored in the forest vegetation and soils into the atmosphere, making them to carbon sources rather than sinks. At the very time we need them more than ever to take our carbon out of the atmosphere and store it safely in their woodland soils, and to mitigate flooding by storing and slowing the water during extreme rainfall events, logging is compounding the problems. By causing an attrition of old hollow-bearing trees that so many of our species rely upon, including the mature trees necessary as future replacements. Removing mature trees with their abundance of essential resources, including browse and nectar. Drying forests by opening the canopy and creating more thirsty regrows, making them more vulnerable to fire and reducing runoff into streams. Increasing flammability and fire intensity by creating stands of dense regrows and short-lived pioneers. Disturbing rainforest buffers, creating fuel and drying and increasing the flammability of both the buffer and adjoining rainforests. Facilitating weed invasion, particularly by lanthana, by removing overstory and disturbing understories and soils. Facilitating bell minor saturated diabat, which is being aggravated as trees are increasingly stressed due to climate heating. And direct killing of threatened plants and trees. In the midst of the current climate extinction crises, we need to urgently stop logging of public native forests and repair the damage we have caused, to allow them to regain their natural integrity to better withstand the escalating threats. We have basically harmed the carbon storage by stopping, and by stopping logging, make regain that over time, and make a significant contribution taking up New South Wales' carbon emissions and achieving net zero as soon as possible. So that's the end of my statement. I'd just like to table two documents. One is providing homes for highly defended animals, that relates to the Natural Resources Commission recently suppressed hidden recommendations about the need to retain recruitment trees as well as increased retention of hollow-bearing trees, a recommendation that hasn't been acted on. And the Department of Primary, paper on the Department of Primary's Forestry's claim that logging has no impact on koalas. I believe totally valid assumptions to be made from their research, and I think they misrepresent the outcome of their research. I know they're good evidence to the inquiry before, so I'd like to table those, and I'm happy to just have them.
Sure. I'll have one of the committees to be there to pick them up. Would you also provide your statement that you just gave, just to Hanso, to help with the transcription as well? That would be fantastic.
Excuse me, Chair.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I was supposed to mention that we have tabled some additional material, which has been handed to one of your officers.
All right, excellent, thank you.
And yes, I'm just emailing the PowerPoint presentation from which I gave those figures.
Excellent. Thank you, that will help us a lot. I will now just throw the question in, I'm looking at Mr. Vich, do you want to open the batting again?
I'm good to go.
All right, excellent.
Can I, my first question would be for Clarence Valley Conservation Coalition. In your submission, you talk about catchment protection and issues around...
Could you speak up, please?
You talk about catchment protection?
Yes.
Yep. Can you, we heard this morning from someone else, some issues around the impact of logging on recreational and commercial fishing in this part of New South Wales because of the issues of water quality. Could you just maybe expand on your submission by talking a bit more about what are the issues you see arising from timber, industrial timber harvesting and its impact on catchment?
Well, in rea, I can say this, and maybe there's more that can be added to this, but in relation to the buffer zones that are provided along streams, for example, the buffer zones have been decreased in recent times, so that there's an issue there with erosion and also soil being, particularly during heavy rain events. And obviously, there have been a lot of heavy rain events, particularly in recent times in the North, and that's exacerbated. You've only got to look at our rivers and see that they remain brown, grossly chocolatey brown for an extended period, much longer than usual, because there is this continual erosion. It isn't only the timber, I might add, it isn't only the timber industry that's responsible for that, there are some farming practices where you have cattle, not adequate barriers along streams and cattle, causing that kind of erosion too. In relation to the fishing industry, I know there have been concerns, I don't, I can't specifically state, but I know downriver from Grafton, because we have a very long estuary, there have been concerns with some fishers and some things like crabs and so on in some of these areas where it's very difficult in times of...
Okay. Thank you. And your submission, you also, on the very last page, you say that you called the New South Wales Government to make a solid commitment to invest in long-term, well-protected plantations. Now, we've heard from some groups that plantations are not the way to go on the North Coast, and we've heard from other groups that there should be greater investment. I'd like, actually, all members of the panel, if I could get your views around hardwood plantations, and are they a value or, like, here's your chance, have a say about what you think about plantations, hardwood plantations.
Well, from a personal point of view, I think that, I must add too, that we did say we don't want plantations put on land that has been cleared for the purpose, that native vegetation has been cleared for the purpose. And in relation to plantations, hardwood plantations, I have always thought, and I know there are people in the community who, it seems to me, given the value of some timbers, particularly some rainforest timbers, and I think we were talking earlier about some other hardwood timbers, there is certainly a case for establishing some mixed, I would say mixed, plantations rather than these monocultures that are favoured so much in the plantations that we have as well currently.
Okay, thank you.
And I think Phil's got something he wants to say.
I worked for DLWC, Department of Land and Water Conservation, when the Plantation and Reforestation Act was first brought in. We were the regulatory authority in part for that. And a lot of the plantations that were put in did unfortunately require, wasn't meant to, but did include clearing of native vegetation, which really riled us. A lot of the landholders, State Forest Plantations Division was dictating what went in, and a lot of gimpy messmate was one of the species that was planted, which was totally unsuitable for the area. A lot of landholders objected to that as well, and probably didn't put as much effort into maintaining the plantations was what they could have. And a lot of them wanted mixed-species eucalypts that were endemic to the area. And I think had, they had more of a say in what went on to private land, I think you would have got a much better take-up, and there would have been a much higher success rate because a lot of the plantations failed, failed through too much water or too dry or they were just in the wrong places for that particular species. I don't know what their ultimate, nobody really knew what the ultimate objective of the plantation species that they put in. There was a mode of thought that suggested it was going to all be for woodchip, which sort of made sense for the species that they chose, but the transportation costs would have been problematic and quite prohibitive. So from the perspective of an ecologist, and you've got land that's underutilised, I think a mix of native hardwoods and rainforest species, it takes rainforest species a really long time, so, you know, if you're planting a tree, you don't expect it to be harvested in your lifetime kind of thing. And I was just talking to Justin about a tree that was cut down years ago on an adjoining property to a friend of mine, and I said, "Look, I'm looking for some tallow wood to build some furniture out of," and this old guy goes, "I know just a species," and he's dragged this tallow wood log off, it was, you know, a couple of metres long and 550 round, and we slabbed it on the block, and that is now furniture in my house, and that was going to be burnt. So it shows that the timber industry does not utilise everything that it cuts down, and in fact, it's estimated that between 20 and 30% of a tree is used and the rest of it goes to waste. So I think we need to completely change the way that forestry operates in Australia because the waste is just phenomenal. Not to mention all the other problems, environmental costs.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pugh, your views on hardwood plantations?
Look, it's a conflict issue, to say the least. Back in 1990, there was the Resources Commission, the federal inquiry, and to the timber industry came a lot of recommendations. But one thing we wanted was plantation inventories to be done, and so there was David Forrest and the plantations, and forestry had bugger all. So what they did was they went through and assessed all their logging reports and made claims that all these areas were now plantations, hadn't been before. Areas going back to the 60s and 70s, they were now claimed as plantations, they'd never claimed to be plantations before. And in 1997, I was in, having Jack Lambert, Plantation Technical Diary Committee, would have set up the New South Wales Government to review the claimed plantations. The guy knew a lot of them were erroneous, they didn't really exist. So we had to go through all their proof of their plantations, and look, some of it just didn't exist. A lot of areas they were claiming as plantations, they had no proof whatsoever that it was a plantation. Some of them had technically decorations, that some had planted a few trees there at some time in the past. I went out and assessed quite a number of them, including as part of the committee, but also on my own, and found that there were no planted trees in quite a number of these areas. So I was in the committee, I must be overseeing it, so I wanted proof of all this stuff and so on, and in the end, the forestry disbanded that committee after the regional, before the regional forest, New South Wales Regional Forest of Ireland, and then went ahead and declared virtually all those areas, including the ones that I knew were false and had presented evidence the committee were false, as plantations. So look, I think a lot of New South Wales forestry's claimed plantations are not real. So that's one issue, one problem. In terms of establishing them on cleared land or on forested land, look, I presented evidence to Kim Ye, who's the Forest Minister, of up at Sugarloaf, I think you can go to the photos of the quite good regrose native forest, you know, like trees that size, regrose, you know, where they cleared to establish plantations using state money because it's all about establishing plantations. They got rid of all these well-advanced trees, and it's flattened a lot, and then went and planted it. I'm also aware, I advised Kim Ye even too, they were planting dunce white gum across the landscape, in thousands of hectares. And, you know, back in the 1980s, they tried that up at Dorago, forestry had tried up at Dorago, and what they are, insect traps, all the insects flock to the dunce white gum to defoliate them, they have failure. But nonetheless, I was going to Kim Ye and all that evidence, nonetheless, forestry continued to go and plant in dunce white gum, and most of their plantations died and failed. You know, the other one is the MIS schemes, you're aware of those, where plantations were planted all across the landscape, particularly the upper Clarence Valley and so on, and most of those being bulldozed out of the ground and not even utilised, or at best sent off as logs for overseas export. I think their, whole plantation industry has been a mess. And the other pure example is the Walkeer pine plantation. Forestry illegally cleared old growth forests to plant pine plantations up at Walkeer, you know, from the 1980s on. We actually had to set in court action to stop them clearing old growth in the end because they needed NIS. And then they, all those plantations have been a mess ever since and failed, and now they're being exported down to Tumit, but before that, they would be exported overseas. So I think there's serious issues about the plantation today. Unfortunately, I want to make very clear, I'm in favour of plantations, we need to go there, we're currently getting 86% of that timber from plantations, we need more, we have like a million hectares of hardwood plantations in Australia, and only 2% gets converted into sawlog, the best is all exported as chips. I mean, just how disgusting that, if we just made, got 25% of our existing eucalyptus plantations made into sawn material rather than exported, we'd meet all that timber, all our hardwood timber, current hardwood timber need. So look, yes, we need plantations, but the whole system, I think, is a total shambles, and neither are really good serra going through, and the problems that occur time, time, time again need to be rectified through some proper planning, proper assessment, and, you know, let's establish sawmill where the resource is, let's not take resource to the sawmills or send it overseas, which is even more ridiculous.
Yep. Mr. Morris, have you got anything to say?
Yeah, I'd like to have something to say. Where I live up in the upper Clarence was one of the centres for the plantation development under the Bob Carr government, threw millions of dollars to get landholders on board, as well as Forest Corp establishing plantations. They had consultations around the area at the time, and they stressed the point that they were the experts in eucalyptus plantation management, which it turned out they weren't. And even though they were pressed a lot that it was mainly about woodchips, they assured me that it was a sawlog-driven plantation development. They chose four species in my sub-catchment and most of the sub-catchments around, there was white gum, spotted gum, blackbutt, and what was the other one? Well, there's another, the fourth one I can't think of right now, but they are all light-coloured timbers. So that was all to facilitate a wood pulp industry, because one of the big problems with pulping native forests is the red timbers, they need to bleach, a lot of toxins. So straight away, I smelt a rat when they're all fast-growing, light-coloured timbers. I'd say two-thirds of the plantations actually failed because they're bad site selection. I wrote a paper condemning them, it was published in the newspaper, they threatened to sue me at one stage, and then they came and... sat down with me and had a talk. And the head guy doing the plantations at the time, I said, have knocked over tallow wood, ironbark, steelbox, a whole range of high-value timber trees, um, to plant these low-value pulp species, why don't you plant these trees that are good for timber? And he said to me, I know you're right, he said, but that's not what the investors want. And and when I said, well, what do they want? He said they want certainty on growth rates. They had the growth rates on these four species they were planting supposedly. Turned out most of them didn't grow at that rate anyway. And in the last three or four years, they were established around the early two thousands, late nineties. Most of them have gone past my house, wrecking the roads, as we call them chopsticks or toothpicks. Their logs this round, eight foot long stacked up, I believe a lot of them were sent to the port of Brisbane, stuck in containers and sent to China for God knows what. And I believe some of them went to the sugar mills to be burnt for electricity. On top of that, under the plantation code, we fought and fought to retain the big hollow trees in paddocks that had been there for two hundred years or more. Some of them had multiple hollows, were known as roost for eagles and all sorts of creatures. They fought and fought to be able to get rid of those trees because they were in the way of establishing the plantation. So they got an exemption from the veg-clearing laws at the time to knock over these big old trees, put in their plantations, some of them failed within four or five years, and they put the cows back on the paddock without any big old trees left. Um, and once again, the managed investment schemes, I think you all should be aware what it wrought that was. So I'm similar to Dylan, and I think we all are. We all saw that, we all see the need for eucalypt plantations, but they've got to be well-thought about and well-managed. Forest Corp were running around saying they were the experts in eucalypt plantation management before they even knew what they were doing. I then found out they'd sent some guys to South America to study the tallow wood plantations over there to see what to do. The other thing with eucalypt plantations in Australia is they're heavily grazed by insects. Tallow um, tallow wood plantations in South America, I understand, grow at more than twice the rate they do here because nothing will eat the eucalypt leaves or mulch. So from my understanding, about half of the eucalypts' annual foliage in Australia is consumed by insects. So when we grow our eucalypts in other countries, they are far more competitive than when we grow them here. So there's a lot of issues to deal with around plantations, but I think we all all support the move out of native forests.
Okay, thank you. That's that's great.
Can I ask one chair, sorry, just be aware, we we're running quickly out of time and other members haven't asked a question. Um, uh, Mr. Pure, I just wanted to, members might not have read this document you circulated yet. D P I forestry's claim that logging has no impacts on koalas is invalid. I just want to give you an opportunity to quickly explain your um, analysis there. We, you know, we had it put to us, I I guess, pretty clearly by Forestry Corporation yesterday, the this research and this sense that, um, well, not only that, um, uh, it doesn't harm koalas, but the sense that actually they prefer logged forests and younger trees in particular, and if the trees are just left to all grow old, that that's not really suitable for koalas in the long term. So can you just um, explain quickly? And I I think quickly is the imperative there, your your analysis.
So I'll just draw your attention to page six of my report, if that's okay. I've got uh, two comparative maps there, before and after logging. I'll emphasize first off that before logging was under drought, the worst drought we've had on the North Coast. So they're incenting droughts, stress to koalas, uh, to after the rain, and uh, and then the logging impacted top of that. There are only also only part of area of logs, so on the second half of that page, you'll see the black uh, overlay is the um, logging area, and the black dots are his sensor site. But what that clearly shows, to me anyway, is that up to, in the top of that map, you've got those blue areas and some with a purple overlay, they're basically old growth forests. And so before the logging had good koalas in the area, so the good koalas are the the green areas. There are the koala hotspots, uh, according to his assessment, there's a few scattered around the rest of the compartment. And after logging, those hotspots are mostly around the old growth up in the top. And you'll see the white areas down the south, uh, to the to the lower part of the maps, uh, which are where there's nil or virtually hard hitting koalas have expanded dramatically. And that's with drought recovery and with 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 logging on top of it. So here the forest is recovering and the logging is knocking out the koala. So overall, I I assessed his three logging areas. Um, and within the areas actually logged, um, in two thousand and twenty, um, uh, from comparing extreme drought in spring two thousand and nineteen to to the wet spring two thousand and twenty, it appears to have been around a twenty-three percent decline in areas with relatively high male koala calling frequency, the hotspots, the green areas. A twenty twenty-seven percent decrease in areas with moderate calling frequency, and a thirty-six percent increase in areas of no or very low uh, koala male calling frequency. And that's despite the drought. And so two of the three creatures of national parks that are logged quite a while ago, but uh, used as controls by him, indicate there was consistent persistence of koala, of of high koala calling frequency sites, like those hotspots. They maintained between the the two two sampling periods over the years. Um, it suggests to me stable breeding colonies, whereas in the recently logged forests, those hotspots mostly disappear or move across the landscape, suggests to me that the koalas were put under immense stress and were moving around the landscape. And the trouble with that is, he's got little, he's got his little recorders up there around the landscape, and the koalas are moving past them, calling uh, in desperation, trying to find their territory again or new territory, looking for mates. Who knows what the male the male koalas were up to, but it suggests to me a very unstable population after the logging. And uh, the, uh, one of these uh, log sites was logged like thirty years before, and so they they weren't so badly hit there. But the ones that were logged more frequently, there's hardly any koalas left, they're they're in this situation where they're wanting, to me, they appear to be wandering around the landscape, looking for looking for somewhere. I I think they're what you call sink populations that are in risk of collapse.
Um, just to um, confirm your analysis there, you you're not contesting the 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 methodology, the 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 data, but your interpretation of the data is almost the inverse of the interpretation of the D P I scientists who conducted this work?
I I think his methodology has serious problems. Um, uh, I think the fact that comparing extreme drought to a not drought, you'd expect the koalas to be calling more, to be more interested in mating when they're not under immense stress. So I think that's a methodology, a mythological problem. Um, and also I think he tried to convert his calling into density. So he's saying this is the density of koalas per hectare, I don't think it is at all, I I don't think that's established. I I think what I'm to, how I'm taking this data is saying, well, these green hotspots that he's found, where koalas are calling both in both time periods or, you know, at the time measured, but where they're persistently calling from over time suggests they're the core breeding areas, and when you get an expansion of areas with no koala calls, you've got to think there's a subpoena effect there. So so I think it's pretentious, I don't believe it's real at all. The koala, the logging had no precedent, they're totally wrong. And um, yeah.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Are there sort of questions? Yeah, Mr. Repeth, you have something to add?
Sorry, um, just on the koala thing, I've been involved in radio collar tracking with um, Dan Liney and other people. And um, invariably, when you've got a radio collar on a koala, they'll end up in the biggest trees. So if it's a primary browse tree or a shade tree, they'll end up in the biggest trees. So, you know, the 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 um, the chemical content of leaves in younger trees is different to older trees, is not enough, they're under more stress as they grow. They're protecting themselves as they grow. It's it's quite complex, but it doesn't stand up to scrutiny, that kind of methodology. Unless you're radio collar tracking them and you've identified as many as you can in a population. And don't forget, you've got a male and four to five females in any one cohort, and the male will go around and service all the females, and they they maintain a fairly um, consistent home range, and so anything that's moving around the landscape is usually moving out of those, so so young that are moving out. And as a consequence, you'll get set more colonies set up if there's the availability of of resources. But quite often now, they're just sinks because, um, it doesn't matter where you go, and I've done radio collar tracking on the North Coast and out at Gunnerdale where the greatest koala populations are and, you know, they're all, during the drought, they were just falling out of trees dead. So because of the heat and the, so, you know, koalas are, you know, they're they're a pretty touchy species, but so are all hollow-dependent ones.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that pretty much takes us right on time. I don't believe any of you took questions on notice, but if there was one, the committee secretary will be in touch, and you'll have twenty-one days to get back to us. But once again, thanks for uh, travelling and 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 coming to talk to us today. Thank you.
Thanks for having us. I hope we were informative.
Excellent. Uh, we now welcome our final witnesses uh, today, noting we have uh, Mr. Sil- Mr. Silva with us at the moment, and we believe Mr. De Ro is on his way, he's just running a bit late. Um, but we will s- we will start with you, uh, Mr. Silva, um, swearing you in and uh, going through that process, and when Mr. De Ro arrives, we'll go back and and swear him in as well. Um, so would you just state your name, position, title, and swear either an oath or affirmation?
My name is Ursula de Silva. I'm the spokesperson of Camp Rimba, um, an anti-logging campaign, and I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Uh, would you like to make a short opening statement at all?
Yep. Um, I've also got these to table to the committee.
Yeah, excellent. Yeah, if you did, the committee secretary will um, pick them up.
My name is Ursula de Silva. I'm the spokesperson of Camp Rimba, which for over a year has been protecting prime koala habitat in the Urinba State Forest from being turned into low-quality salvage wood. If Forest Corp New South Wales was truly taking into account the sustainability of their industry, then they must answer to their contribution to a global climate crisis and a biodiversity collapse. Professor Lindemeyer often cites the impacts of logging on increasing fires and droughts in his research. Native forest logging also contributes significantly to our greenhouse emissions, releasing as much as a quarter of Australia's transport emissions, as many of its products have short lifespans, such as paper pulp, woodchips and pallets. Furthermore, sixty percent of the biomass from logging is burnt back into the atmosphere or is left behind to become fire hazards, such as seen in the photo handed to the committee. Shortly after this fire was taken, the area burnt in the catastrophic fires of the Black Summer. There is nothing sustainable about this practice in an economic or environmental sense. The demand for softwood is growing, which is a plantation-based wood. In fact, eighty-seven percent of the nation's log production comes from plantations alone. The building industry does not require native forest logging for its continuation. It does not take great economic foresight to see that plantation-based timber, not native forest logging, is the way of the future. According to the A W E, plantation and farm forestry provide the greatest opportunity for the growth of the wood and paper industry. Switching off the mindset of using native forests as a timber resource in a time of mass extinction is critical. If instead we were open to practices such as carbon trading schemes, we could generate approximately sixty million dollars from the Eden and Southern R F A areas alone in the period of two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and forty-one. Contrast this to the twenty million dollars of taxpayer money lost last year to fund this obsolete and harmful practice. New South Wales would be wise to catch up with the growing trend of phasing out native forest logging, as seen in Victorian W A, and facilitate an inevitable and sustainable evolution of the industry using transitional packages such as demonstrated by these states. It would benefit us in job security and provision. Such transition is key to helping the survival of our species and millions of others on a planet we must not take for granted. I need you to stop logging Urinba's forests today and turn them into koala reserves now. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, given that that was a prepared statement, would you be happy to email that through to the committee secretary? Just so hands side gets everything a hundred percent right. Um, that'd be great. Um, I'm looking for questions. Mr. Vich?
Thanks for that. Um, can I just ask, uh, so you talked about just transition in your opening statement. Um, do we just want to elaborate a bit further or expand a bit further on what what you see just transition looking like?
Absolutely. I believe that we could use our public forests for different resources, such as ecotourism, facilities such as treetop parks, bike avenue, bike parks, we could, there are many different recreational facilities we could turn our state forests into, as well as locking them up for carbon capture storage and sharing those facilities with the public still. We don't need a log to make an economic or a community benefit from these areas.
Yep. Um, and I think it's really important we get on the record, um, the 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 importance uh, of the forests to to use in this region. Um, can you explain a bit more about how young people engage with country?
Absolutely. Um, state forest is an opportunity for people from the city to come and enjoy our country's natural resources. Um, otherwise, they haven't got that access to it, and in my forest, in Urinba State Forest, it's widely used as a recreational facility. There are mountain bike riders, motorbike riders, horse riders, there are bushwalkers, people taking out their dogs. We love our forests, we we cherish it.
Yep, yep. Um, and do you see a role in land management? Um, so one of the issues that's been raised uh, on numerous occasions is actually the issue of weeds and pests in uh, and I guess the lack of resourcing or funding to address the weeds and pest issue. Do you see there's a greater role, job opportunity in in the area of weeds and pests management?
Absolutely. If we were looking after our forest sustainably, we'd have more environmental management in our forests instead of debilitating them by cutting them down and introducing invasive species such as weed and pests.
Yeah, yep. Thanks.
Mr. Phil?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Silva, for being here today. Can you just explain to us about Camp Rimba? What 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 that is, what you're doing at the moment, how long you've been there, what it looks like?
Yeah, um, so I just wanted to point out first as well, on the back of that photo I handed you, there's a Q R code. If you scan that Q R code, you'll see the references that I'm garnering information from. So Camp Rimba has been established for about a year now, even though forestry is logged continually over twenty years in our area. We were set up because the community was alarmed about losing our precious resources. It's a regrowth forest, and I don't understand why they keep saying that they're going to get high-quality sawlogs out of this forest, which has had about twenty to thirty years of recuperation time. Um, we're a committed community effort, and we need to stop forest logging in an area where a koala has been sighted. Um, forestry refused to do any surveys upon knowing this information, which they've been aware of for six or seven months now. Um, they flat refused to do anything with it. We've gone down every single avenue they've thrown our way to make them acknowledge that there is a koala in the area, and according to the coastal I F O As, they need to take this new information into account with their logging practices, yet they continue to log under the mandate that there is no contemporary koala record present.
And just to pick up, if you don't mind, Justin.
Yeah.
What evidence, anecdotally, any any sort of evidence, um, that your organisation has that there are koalas in Urinba State Forest?
There was a sighting that was seen by one of my neighbours, I live on a road that borders the state forest. Um, there was photographic evidence which was lodged to BioNet dot com or dot net. Um, yeah, and we've got a citizen science report I compiled about the fact that Urinba is prime koala habitat, according to ecologists and horticulturists with the food sources available.
Good, good. Is that in any of, I've just flicked through the references as per the Q R code you supplied. Is any of um, any of that in here somewhere?
I can add the citizen science report to that, absolutely.
Thank you.
Um, what does it look like, the camp? What what's going on there?
Well, we were in the bush for about three months, and we had different gatherings and people coming along to events, but then because of Covid, we had to shut down and we just operated our campaign online since then.
Yeah, okay. Um, we've had uh, some evidence given uh, to to the committee, including today from people in the the timber industry. I guess making the case that um, a lot of the opposition to um, the harvest, ongoing logging of of native forests is, um, I guess ideologically motivated. They certainly see um, protest activity as a very big um, draw against um, or or a big restriction on access to what they see as an available resource, um, that they are able to legally um, harvest for economic opportunity. I guess, you know, someone who's been involved with, I guess, you know, direct action protest activity, you know, actively um, creating a barrier to accessing that resource, I'll just give you an opportunity to respond um, to that and and maybe explain to the committee, you know, what motivates you to do to do what you're doing?
I believe we can't consider our forests as resources when there are so many alternatives available. We're in a time of mass extinction, the global climate crisis is upon us, and we can switch to something like plantations, which use a fraction of the land usage that native forest logging uses and manages to deliver, to deliver eighty-seven percent of our log consumption alone. If we transition to other practices such as agro forestry, there is more livelihood for livestock to benefit from shade, which for some reason we've forgotten that livestock might need the last few hundred years to use. Um, I I don't see them as economic resources, I see them as something that we are, um, we we benefit from as a species, but we also have to share and maintain, and I think that that is our true custodial role in these areas particularly.
If we were going to transition to plantations, that is going to take a bit of time. We've heard today that that's not been very successful in the past, probably through more lack of planning rather than, you know, unable to be done. So if it takes us thirty or forty years to grow plantations to a harvestable level, would you be okay, supportive of an expanded role for private native forestry whilst that transition to plantations occurred?
Absolutely. I think we can use degraded farmland and rehabilitate it using such practices. And at this stage, we've already put ourselves in a softwood shortage, so we don't have much of a choice but to use the next twenty to thirty years to regrow a supply that we once had but have lost due to mismanagement.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Can I just ask, what is it Mick Veach pulled up about mountain biking? And I myself mountain biking in Arimba. What's your organisation's view on the mountain biking that takes place there at the moment?
I think if it's done in a way where you're not harming the environment too much, I think it's fine. I think at some point you have to have access to the forest, and as long as you're trying to work in unison with it and having things that are established there, such as a mountain bike trail, but you do not expand further. And if you have the principle of education undergoing these activities, I think you're more consciously aware of what impact you will make on the environment. But if there's more of a balance, then we wouldn't have to worry about the little minimal activities that we do that could harm the forest in a greater picture.
So if I'm interpreting it correctly, you believe it's positive to have people using the forest, engaging with the environment, and recognising its value?
Absolutely. I think it benefits us also as a nation. We have a great cultural and environmental reserve to garner from and learn from as well that has supported us through millennia.
Thanks.
The forest in the background there is different to the forests, other forests we've seen on this trip. Is it, can you tell me a little bit about that? Is that a younger forest?
Which forest, sorry, on the photo? Yeah, that's in the south coast. Yeah, in my area as well, I've had giant logging piles that could fill this room that have just been dumped and left there as well.
You're providing us the sort of evidence of the waste, the sort of the slashing, the fire risk.
Absolutely. That whole area got burnt and decimated, and that's one of the contributing factors, that debris that was left. We are lucky on the central coast. We have a population of up to half a million people. And if forestry continued to log and leave debris such as they have, it puts us in jeopardy. Forests are a barrier against fires by retaining moisture. If you cut down a forest, you dehydrate an area and it becomes more fire-prone. It is dangerous.
Just looks like we might have your colleague trying to find, so we might just wait a minute and see whether that is him.
So maybe while we're waiting, Chair, if I could.
If you've got other questions.
You said you've largely moved on online now. What's the status? There's not logging happening there at the moment, but it's still proposed by forestry corporation. Have they given any undertakings to sort of press pause until they can confirm the evidence that you've provided? Or what's the status of their proposed?
They've simply left it as approved. There's been no movements.
So they could just come in any day?
Yeah, I think we have two days' notice, I believe. And we're protecting two areas which compromise about a hundred and sixty hectares of bushland. But overall, the LAP tank point plan is about eight hundred and sixty-four hectares of bushland.
So they would have published their proposed harvest plan at this point? Do you recall what the breakdown of the end-use products were according to the harvest plan?
Yeah, so at the moment, it stands at seventy percent. It stands at seventy percent low-quality salvage pulpwood and firewood because the community was in disarray about the fact that an initial eighty percent estimate of low-quality salvage wood pulpwood and firewood was being used and extracted was the basis of destroying our forests.
Right, so they've modified that slightly to increase the amount of high-quality logs, but still it's seventy-five percent will be pulp log. But largely from your region, that essentially becomes firewood.
Absolutely.
Do you know where it ultimately is going to?
Sorry?
Do you know ultimately, you know, where it's going to be sold as firewood? Is that locally or does it get, it gets transported?
I don't know.
Can I just ask, are there any beekeeping sites in the land that you're all looking after?
I'm not too sure. Yeah, I can ask.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just interested. The beekeepers have a, they're a stakeholder that has a very big interest in. Absolutely. Someone's got to. They actually have a big interest in, as a stakeholder, in how these lands are managed as well, and so, and often they're forgotten, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
If you could find it, that'd just be handy.
Absolutely.
I must say that there hasn't been as much, you know, most of the focus on native forest logging is on the south coast and north coast. There hasn't been as much intensity of logging on the central coast and even the Hunter region in recent years. Do you know when the most recent logging was in your region?
It was in 2020. It wasn't documented. We went up there and saw that there'd been logs that had been cut down. Prior to that, I think it was 2017, and before that, it was the generation before me fighting it twenty-odd years ago.
So only a couple of coops in that whole region have been.
Apparently there's fourteen.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, Mr Veach, I'll just clarify that. When you say it wasn't documented, we've heard evidence that obviously all these operations need to be put on Forestry Corp's website.
It may have been fining or something.
Yeah.
What happened was, it was initially put down as a different compartment number, but then that compartment number was loaded onto the website. But then it was changed because, I think it was the coastal IFA changed in 2017. So it was re-documented as compartment zero zero six. Yep, so they had, sorry, I might have been mistaken in that. They had the initial documents, but they didn't have the current compartment in record. Yeah, which confused me when I went on the website and I saw.
Yeah, I imagine it would be confusing for most, but with that change going on, yeah.
But again, like, you know, we're having this discussion on the north coast, and much more of it is going to higher-value uses, structural timbers, presentation timbers. But I would imagine that for most of the coops on the central coast, it is around that, like the south coast, it is around that seventy percent is pulp wood or low-quality logs.
Yeah, absolutely. I don't think that they can get much high-quality timber from our forest because they are regrowth forests, and there's not the trees that look like they have the capacity to supply that.
What's the predominant species in, is state forest?
We've got red gums, we've got blackbite, we've got, we have acacias, we have lots of rainforest species, we've got black widow, bottle brush, tall sedge, sedges, necklace fern, forest oak, lily pillies. There's a mixture of rainforest species and sclerifell. The rainforest species start quite high up on the ridges, despite what the markings on the maps to protect the rainforest species say. But there are many gullies in compartments marked as well. There are two creek systems that have banglow palms, lily pillies, cabbage tree palms, and a myriad of aquatic life.
Can you give us a sense of how many people in the community are supporting the camp down there and the campaign?
We currently have about six hundred followers on Facebook, and that's just within the page that we've created. I'm not too sure beyond that. I've done email campaigns, and I had an engagement of fourteen thousand people on an email campaign I sent on Facebook. And that was not including the groups that I talked to via email correspondence, which would be the Arimba Residents Community Group. We have Future Sooner on board. We've got the Central Coast Greens on board. We've talked to Labor, we've talked to, yeah, just the Nature Conservation Council.
Are there any other questions? I am aware that Mr Duro is probably a couple of minutes away, but he still has to do a rat test, so I do want to give him an opportunity to present. Mr Field, do you have any further questions? Okay, well, we might, we might just take a brief recess, and that'll give your colleagues some time to get here and do the rat test. We are now back in session. I now welcome Mr Brett Duro. Thank you for getting here. Can you please state your name, position, title, and swear either the oath or affirmation?
Gonna go, Brett Duro, Brett Rodney Hector Duro, Gargan Ballin Chairperson of Gargan Ballin. I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now given to be given, evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Did you want to make a quick opening statement? And we might, they might throw some questions to you. Given we've only got, probably only got about, probably about ten or twelve minutes left of allocated times, I want to give you the maximum amount of opportunity to speak.
Gonna go, thanks for that. Yeah, there's just, this whole strategy in the forestry's plans, a real disappointment to see how they're treating people, the environment, the actual areas. Like, you're wiping out complete beautiful bush that we will need, and then you've got all the works that go into it. That's a lot of damage through making this plan go through. I've got ten folders each for you, all set up with some photos, all my correspondence. Because I've even had a bloke, remember, Dave, Mr Harris. Yeah, he even said he'd notify the forestry. I gave him that email too, because I haven't heard nothing. We're always open to discussions, but they're actually hurting the place. And it's not just in the room, it's a lot of areas. And their consultation period, two days, that's a bit, you know, I don't know how people, we used to work together. Now forestry's been a blocking mechanism for a long time now for us as blackfellas. We had a hard time getting hold of the bushfire to go do cultural burns. It's been pretty well, for a government identity, they're really personal agenda and just going through. Like, we've got open areas and cut areas. They're actually, when they're logging, they're opening it up for other things. They're widening the roads, they're going over grinding groups, ceremonial grounds, they're taking out habitats and native bees, things we need to actually have our Australia go. And it's doing wrong. Like in Arimba, you've got this beautiful, beautiful forest, so close to the city that you could be doing so much with, people, tourism, functions. No, they just want to go through, rip it open, rip it out. And what's worse than yours, it's going overseas. Now, I don't mind helping others, but they're not helping here. They're actually really, they're taking away from us and giving them nothing. The people do not even get a chance to have a say. We've got people walking around there that say, oh, how beautiful it is. Then I've got sites ripped up and marks and graped. And these are people, my family, my missus, her history is getting overwhelmed by industrialisation. And it's happening all over the place. We have it everywhere. It's actually, I'm seeing little, little things like this on back of log trucks. Now, I don't know what you should make out of it, but if you look at the bush, it'd come back after the burn. In the old days, when we burned it, it was because it needed it. It was a part of our culture. It actually reggerminated. Fire does that to a lot of our seeds around here, and we do need it. But when you're gonna just go through and harvest, harvest? That's really like, it's really beautiful in that word alone, isn't it? Like harvest, they're just gonna take everything. So we're all about wildlife. Where's the goannas, bees, koalas? They haven't even mentioned them, and yet, because, well, that shouldn't be mentioned because they should be looked after. It's an icon of Australia. If it was on the kangaroo and the emu, there'd be something done, wouldn't there? We need to actually start looking after our animals, or else we're going to end up having none here. Our bush, well, the native tucker, you've got a lot of that to go with it. The stories, the teachings that go behind it, the spiritual side of it. Like, our dream times are made up from the bush. It's so important to us and to other people. I've watched people walk. And this old lady, I still can't get over, she walked up there just so excited to let me know, I've seen another site. And I'd love to show you, but because I was trying to just sort this out, I haven't even got back there yet. And that's in the same area, like, come on. And forestry's idea of doing consultation, I'd love to see where. And utilising people who don't know their culture all the way to deal with the land or spiritually or caring, they're not worth even looking at when you're gonna have to take people's futures into consideration. Like, I know yous would love to have your jergens, your little ones. You have to walk around the bush, I bet yous all did, got to enjoy a little bit of it. Just imagine if they can't. That Lowax movie, where they got them blow-up plastic trees. Is that the life we're looking for? Because that's where we're going. I don't want my daughters, my grandchildren, to want to look it up and see what a tree or an animal was because I never had to. My dad-dad, my family, they never did. We've walked this land with pride and respect. All we want to do is share it, not let this happen. Everyone's got to remember, we've got a beautiful, we have pride and joy of everything, our beautiful rich land. Well, everyone else seems to think it's rich because we're not getting anywhere. We want to keep it. I have so many people, black, white, and brindle, all races, want to keep their bush. And to tell you the truth, they've got to stop just Googling shit. Sorry. But yeah, they've just got to stop Googling and point on a map and go, yeah, we'll go for that. Because when you clear the forest, you're taking out native springs. Now, native springs is another aspect to our bush that's real important. Them natural springs, they've been, they're all over it. And it's shameful to know that you can rip out a tree for progress, sustainable imports, or whatever it is, but you're gonna ruin the place. It's just as bad as that mining and fracking. You're just taking out, you're gonna end up with landslide. You've got nothing holding this place together. That's like a lemandra plant when you're holding waterbed, riverbeds together. It's important. It's a piece of it. It wasn't just, oh shit, we'll have a tree there just for the hell of it. No, that's a piece of nature, a piece of Australia, a piece of importance, our beauty, our richness. We all have the pride of our land. We have the respect of it too. Let's work with it instead of against it, because while we're doing this with the forestry, it's not helping anyone. This is, this is really, we're gonna end up just as bad as them other countries where they've got to come to us and buy their shit because, oh, they've run out. Why can't we just make it stand and keep it beautiful? There's no harm in actually going back and doing our ways, working with each other. I'd love to train people to walk around and see the beauty. I'm open for that all the time. But because of COVID, it's not, but we're getting there like it is. We're making room for everything. Look, there's, change is happening. Let's make a change for the better for Australia, for our woods, our bush, our animals, and our little ones. Because I don't know how yous are gonna feel explaining to them that they can't go out camping because there's no trees. Like, really? Being able to go and have a feed on the fire, best times. You look forward to it. Going for a walk and running across a bush turkey or a goanna. Nothing can replace that. These, I've got photos, it's, but without that bush, we don't have that. And it's so close, you've got so, there's got to be better ways. There's got to be an understanding between community and that, because they're utilising it. You've got the bush being utilised by communities, but then you've got people coming in like forestry who have no care. Go home to their place. They've all got bosses. They don't have to worry. They can look up a tree if they want. It's beautiful. But we can't. We love our trees the way they are. I have scarred trees with native bees' nests, you know. That's so special. Like, it's just, it's one of the things you can't explain how. You see a grinding group, and you just, you can see the work and the effort, the time. They didn't just sit there and work out what they could take out of it. They hung around and enjoyed it. Our trees is our spirits. You watch them dance. You see wind to wind, you watch, see two of them dance, who's dancing together. It's like life. They're all partners. It's just, if you ever can, just take a moment and just enjoy, listen to it. It's got a beautiful sound. It actually makes you feel young. So many healing, so much, even for the culture and non-culture, it heals you. You can walk out and come back feeling twice as great again. I know a lot of people would have experienced going kayaking, going walking, going abseiling. I love that. It's all about the benefit that it gives us. It's not what we get out of it. We get our life and our happiness and our beautiful, beautiful air. But what are we going to give back for the appreciation it's been, for everything that's given to us? We're gonna rape it and take it and just get rid of it, wood chip it. Don't see that and being really nice. Yeah. She's a mother to earth. Just imagine if her husband come over and asked her, why are you hurting his woman? But she hasn't got anyone and that's why we're here. We're the ones that'll stand up for her. And there's plenty of people that will. But we want to do this right, properly, for the future. We could sit here and do the roundabout of the government's way of trying to get somewhere, but I reckon you fellows will be smart enough to see we need our bush for a future. Sorry, ma'am, really, but my bad. But yeah, it's just, you've got to, when my daughters walk around and other people, I had people come and experience, it's so beautiful. To have them walk out of there happier, knowledge. They get to pass it on. Having a story to pass on is what we're about. Our pride is to fight for what's right, the Australian way. Well, our bush is right. It's been right for us forever. It made us so strong. It made us a proud Australians. We actually look forward to telling people how beautiful our bush is. Come and have a hangout. That's where we can make things go further, bringing them over to enjoy the bush, not take shit out of it. There's a lot more to it because, believe me, you're only getting, you get, taking it clear out, like, you should see the photos I've got. It's, it hurts. I actually had to shave my elders and I watch them tear up and go, don't let this go. Do what I can, do it, do it properly. Because it's the future. It's not just, it's everywhere. And sorry to be so.
No, no, it's, your testimonies are very passionate and I appreciate, and I'm loathe to cut you off, but I, we do have a short timeframe and we do need to pack up and get back to the airport, get a plane. But what I will commit to is we'll, we'll take a look at all the folders of information you give you and we will maybe put some questions to you as written questions that you might be able to get back to us on. And that way you'll feel like you've had your fair input into the day.
Even walkies around. It's been beautiful actually to, because it's, yeah, there's still so much in there that we've just done a track and still so much in there and, yeah.
Yeah. Appreciate you both making the time to travel up here. So just, yeah, it was a big commitment. So, thank you.
No, welcome to Bangaliland up here too, boys.
Thank you.